Welcome to the, thank you for all coming, thank you all for coming to the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant FY 2019 proposal. So I'm Jamie Webb, who's Assistant Planner. Ted Harvey, Pioneer Valletten Commission. Jeff Baggett, Planner for City. And we're meeting tonight just to go over what the city's going to submit for an application to the block grant program for the 2019 grant program. Hopefully, we'll have a brief presentation, some discussion, time for question and answer after. I'm going to do a little intro and Ted's going to talk in more detail about the application. Early in January, we had a community planning, some people were present for it, lively discussion. And from that discussion, we were able to help narrow down what our proposed application's going to be. There were about 30 people present at that meeting. We came up with, we revised the list of priority projects and funding implementation for the city's community development strategy. So the brief of it is that we, based off of what programs we, what the state allows us to apply for funding, limitations on funding because of previous years' grant allocations, we found that it makes the most sense to continue with the Phase Three of the Admiral Street Neighborhood Improvement Project, which you can see on this board over on the under right. The green highlighted streets were Phase One. They're completed as of the end of 2017. The blue streets highlighted are the current 2018 grant that we received from the state. Phase Three would be Maple Street, which is here. And as I said, the funding limitations, and Ted can get into this in more detail, we're not able to do Charles Street at this moment. We'll probably make that a future grant application. And then the other aspect of the application will be continued housing rehab as grant funds allow, probably after the completion of the construction project. So before we go too much further, just making sure that everyone got a handout and signed in on the attendance sheet so we can document that we actually had a public hearing. And so one of the things that came up as part of that community development planning meeting was looking at a planning, a planning grant in the Ferry Street, Parsons Street neighborhood. And we started that process by doing income surveys. The grant program, the grant program requires that the all, that a majority of the recipients or beneficiaries of any project are low and moderate incomes. So we did not receive enough income surveys back for that neighborhood to continue with that planning process for this grant application, but it's still a priority for the city based off of the community development strategy that we had and the planning department goal. So that'll be something that we continue to work on outside of this grant application. So hopefully, we'll get into that FY '20 grant application. If there's any questions?
Okay. Did you want to say anything?
Well, I guess Jamie definitely touched on it. I mean, I think through the public meeting in early January, there were a lot of good projects identified, but I think it was a point in time where we, I, we could clearly know that additional work would be necessary, so additional time to prepare possibly for the next round of funding. So we would have, by doing this strategy, which is to continue with the existing project this year, we would have about that much money to potentially have available for a different project next year with a little bit more time to plan, coordinate some of the necessary information, especially the income eligibility survey. It takes a while. So we feel like sticking with the existing project shows our commitment to this area, but then also allows us a little bit more flexibility to look at other projects next year. So we think that's important to, to begin planning and designing another project because this one is, it's coming relatively close to an end. And so if we, you know, by choosing this year, this FY '19, to construct on Maple Street, then we'll have the opportunity to do planning work to explore another project in FY '20. So by front-loading it, it gives us a little bit more flexibility to look at different projects in FY '20, if I didn't just mix that up. So it was, it's more of a strategic move. And we did some additional evaluation of costs to ensure that the construction of Maple Street fits within the budget that we have for, for this grant application. So that's all I would add.
So I'm Ted Harvey. I work with the Pioneer Valletten Commission. I actually live in East Hampton, so it's kind of nice that I don't have to drive, you know, miles away for this. So I, so we are, in the past, we've worked alongside East Hampton, but East Hampton's done a lot of this work on their own. There was a physician here that was funded primarily out of this CDVG money. And when, when that staff person left, for various reasons, cost efficiency, et cetera, and we've been PBPC, the planning commission, has been doing these type of projects for a long time. So East Hampton is now, at least for the foreseeable future, will see how everything plays out, but is working with us to do these specific, just these CDVG-funded projects. So I just wanted to give everybody, it's, I mean, I know you, you said there, you're familiar with the housing rehab program, but are people familiar with the block grant program at all, besides just marginally? I mean, so I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but one of the handouts, the, the FY, proposed FY 2019 Community Development Fund application, that gives a very, 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 very brief overview of what the program is at the top there. And so first of all, this is, what we're doing here is the public presentation of an FY 2019 grant application. It's a competitive grant that the funds come out of the federal government through the Housing and Urban Development Department, comes through the state, through the DHD, Department of Housing and Community Development. And then they do a competitive grant program for all eligible towns and cities in Massachusetts. The goal is, as has been mentioned, is to do projects that serve primarily low to moderate income residents in a town or a city. And what that exact number is depends on what city you're in. I don't remember exactly what it is, and there are different levels, so I don't remember exactly what it is here, but in general, it's low to moderate income beneficiaries. So these are, as it says there, population under 50,000. There is also what is called an entitlement program that larger cities like a Springfield, Boston, Northampton, for other reasons, gets this money as well. And that comes directly from the federal government bypassing the state. So that's a similar program. So if you ever hear of an entitlement community, you're a CDVG, a lot of times, it's these larger cities that actually get the money. But the money we're working with is, and that's not a competitive program. That's just money that they automatically get every year. So this is a competitive program that we go through, that we actually have to put in a fairly robust application to get this funding every year. So the funding limitations was mentioned earlier. And so towns are eligible for a total of 1.35 million over two years. Within that, you're also allowed to only apply as an individual town up to 800,000 per year. So let's say one year, you apply for 800,000, the max, the next year, you're allowed to apply for the difference between 1.35 and, et cetera, et cetera, it just carries on. So that's where our funding limitations come in, when we're looking at what projects we're going to fund. So this year, we have, the city has 552,000 that is eligible to, that's the max they can apply for. So as we kind of alluded to before, there is this Admiral Street Neighborhood project that's been going on for a number of years, and that's that other sheet I handed out to you. It gives a little more, still brief, but a little better introduction and background to that ongoing project. The thing with this type of money, especially when it's, it's, we're solely using this money, is that it's, as you can see, it's limited to what we can do each year. So it tends to be a multi-phase project. You still get a lot of done with your, with the funding we get, but it's not like we could just go in and do that whole neighborhood in one year type of thing. So I, this neighborhood was, before we, a number of years ago, before we started with the city, was kind of prioritized as an area that really needed a lot of work. It says in that end that I gave you that, a lot of the infrastructure under the street had, you know, it's 100-plus years old. So I realize there are lots and lots of neighborhoods like that, but this was put as a priority by the city, by the various departments, planning, DPW, et cetera. So that's where the focus of this whole neighborhood started. We have design works that an engineering firm has done for us for that whole neighborhood, so that's, minus a couple tweaks, that's all been completed. And as Jamie mentioned, we started with the green. We just, we're working on, well, if you go out there this summer, that blue section will be, I mean, construction. And then we're hoping to, again, except for the Charles Street piece of it, we're hoping to finish up this area to, so get this one done, move on to the next, the next phase. So that's the, that's the bulk of what we're going to, what we're talking about applying for funding this year. As was already mentioned too, we're looking at doing housing rehab. Housing rehab is a fairly popular program. It's up to $35,000 that's allowed for a, for units, whether it's a single-family home or a unit within a multifamily home. And then if there's any letter, then it bumps it up to $40,000. And there's all sorts of types of projects that can be done, from a roof to, you know, heating systems, whatever is kind of deemed necessary by the housing inspector that goes in. So that is a program that East Hampton has been doing on and off for, for quite a number of years. And we're looking at using that program as one, if there's funding remaining with this, that we would continue that program as well. I know the city does have some funds aside that potentially could be used to bolster that if there's any extra funding, and kind of combining those funds and have a couple, you know, we do it by units, how many units we can do, units of housing. And so that is also what we're looking at. Anything else? That second page I gave you does give a little summary of what the housing rehab project is. I can always provide anyone who's interested with more information, but maybe do the general idea. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. So the application itself is due March 8th. It was, it had been March 1st, they bumped it out because they were having some technical difficulties on the state's end. So that's when everything has to be turned in. Like I said, the planning commission is working with the city, with these two, to really get this application going. We've been working on it, on the pieces that are necessary, but aren't necessar, there's a lot of smaller pieces that have to go into it, like a management plan and various things that don't necessarily have to do with this particular project. So we've been kind of working on that on the side. And once this public hearing's over, we'll kind of dive into the weeds and put this application together. And then the process is usually, we submit it, and then we don't think about it for many months. And in July, maybe August at the latest, we get the notification, whether the city was awarded or not. And then things kind of start up in the fall, as far as signing documents and all that kind of stuff. Procurement might start in the winter. And then really, we're talking about 2020 with this particular program to get started this summer, 2020. So it's a very long, long process. And you probably won't even be thinking about it after this particular hearing. But, but when it comes around again, if we're funded, we would then have other public meetings, particularly with the residents of that street, but also we would start to have other meetings, as Jeff had mentioned, about the other types of projects we'll be looking at for the next round. It's kind of a continuous thing. So we're always kind of looking for the next, for the next step. And we've started a little bit on the Ferry Street side, Ferry Street area project for our next potential project, but we'll probably be focusing more on that once this, once we kind of get this started. So that's all I have. I mean, I can answer most of your questions, but...
So all that's going to be done this year? The Admiral Clark, Northampton?
Yes.
So you already got the money for that?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's current money that we have right now that we're working on, doing that procurement.
So we're working for, next year for Maple Street area?
Yeah, yes, that's right. Yeah, there's no guarantee that we'd have the funding for Maple Street. Maybe, like I said, it's a competitive application. East Hampton's in a pretty good spot. It's, it's based on the application and the point system that the state sets up. So it depends on your, actually depends on your low to moderate income population, and you get extra points depending on that. Because that's the point of these block grants, is really to support residents in towns that have a higher low to moderate income population. So towns with higher ones have a better chance of getting these funding, which makes sense.
How are the boundaries of the red defined?
I don't know if Jeff or Jamie was just jumping in, because this was before I started working with the city, but this...
Yes. So in 2014, we applied for the design part of this neighborhood. This neighborhood was chosen, there were a number of police reports and DPW reports showing backed-up sewers and lack of, like flooding, storm drain-related flooding, things like that. There was, going back further, a planning study that identified this neighborhood as well. So it's sort of, there's many years of complaint logs and things like that that have identified this neighborhood, as well as we had income surveys for larger areas, and this was an area chosen that because of the, the population was eligible for the grant funding.
I guess, more specifically, we, we live just outside the corner, and we think of the neighborhood as being sort of Franklin Street and, and east. So I'm just wondering how the, what distinguishes the area that's included from the area that's not?
Like I said, I own those, the complaint logs and the, I'd have to go back to look at how that survey was initially done, before I started working with the block grant program, unfortunately before Jeff and Ted also were working on this.
So I don't know if it's necessarily the red outline piece, but sometimes it's merely the fact of what is, what we can, what we have the money for, like if it's a, for this particular program. So if it's like a larger structure, there's, you know, unfortunately, the work is more complex than maybe this type, because it's a limited amount of funding, right? So I, I don't know if that's the case in here, but I run into that in other towns where it's that, unfortunately, it's kind of what the cutting line is. There's no real, you know, it's not a need issue, per se. It's more of just kind of what we can do with the money issue. I don't know if that's the case in this one, but I definitely ran into that before.
And although, they're all pieces of where the infrastructure goes. So the focus of this was sewer and storm drain, and then to reconstruct those systems, obviously you have to dig up the streets and then rebuild the streets after we're done with all that construction. So it feel, you know, at the end of the day, what you see is a new street and new sidewalks, but the, the driver behind this is really the underground utilities. And like I said, there've been, you know, we, you, there are pages and pages and pages of complaint logs of sewer backups and storm drain flooding that were in that. And then this is, you look at the way the streets work, the network, the sewer lines kind of end there, so it doesn't make sense to do the middle section of a sewer line or if it's still backing up behind it. So I think these were, in consultation with DPWs, were the area that made the most sense to begin. And it was not initially a three-phase project. I think it was originally conceptualized as a one- or two-phase project. We had, once the first, once one, once we got the numbers back from the design, the consultant recommended splitting it into the three phases based off of the grant limitations, the 800,000 dollar funding limitations.
So do you know, I would imagine that the, that the lines that run down Maple Street keep going?
Yes.
But do they, is that the case, or do they actually break there and cut down towards Clark Street?
I would have to, I don't have a, I don't know what the sort of map looks like. I'll have to talk about that.
Is, is the question though, if, if there would ever be looking to the left, you know, on Briggs, Maple, and Clark? Is that kind of what you're asking about, is if there would ever be a future upgrade of the infrastructure going left of the map?
Partly that, but also I assume that the lines that run and are part of the block are just as old. So if they are connected, it seems like it wouldn't necessarily give you the full benefit if you only replace part of them. I'm just wondering, just out of curiosity.
Right. And the, it's very complicated for the grant funding, because you have to show that the beneficiaries of the improvements are predominantly low and moderate income.
Right.
So where you have a sewer line that's flowing from a neighborhood that isn't the neighborhood that receives the direct benefit, then you have to include those other popul, the other people in that calculation for low and moderate income.
Right.
So I don't, again, I don't know how exactly that determination was made, but that, if we started in the middle, then we still have to include all of these residents in the, in the calculations, assuming that...
Yeah, that makes sense.
The lines, and so it was, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how it was chosen. We do have, there's this report where these photos were taken from, which was an assessment of the area. So all of that, you know, led to that target area.
I was reading all that. I didn't realize some pumps, where do, where do, is that, when it says it discharges back into the sewer system, does that mean they're discharging it back into the, their basement sewer system? Or, because I mean, my, where I live, everyone's, some pumps are running constantly now, there's a lot of rain, but they're going out into the street. So I mean, it is, doesn't that eventually go out into the sewer system? I'm just curious why it said it's not allowed.
So the, my understanding is that the sewer pipe leading, leading your house, it's a sewer septic that goes and is treated at the wastewater treatment plant, whereas the storm drains on the side of the road are storm water, and they don't, they don't get treated. They usually just discharge into local rivers and streams. I know that Julie can cut you off.
I can speak to it a little, yeah. The idea is that you don't want groundwater to go through the treatment plant, because you're treating essentially clean water, and it's just adding extra cost for the city. And I believe that all of the, I think some pump connections to the storm sewer are, because it's groundwater, it's, it's actually, it's a little bit of a gray area. It's technically not supposed to happen, but groundwater discharges are okay, so it's a little bit of a funny spot.
I think there's also something where they, you pay for water in sewer based off of your water rates, not off of what your, so if you're taking water that comes to your property, not from your tap, and then you're not paying to dispose of it in the storm, in the, in the septic system.
And we don't pay for storm sewers currently, so that's a good question.
That's going to come soon.
It probably should.
Yeah.
Don't you say the housing rehab would be, it's contingent on, assuming that the costs for the construction project are lower than what we're estimating, then there'll be more money at the end, sorry, towards the end of the program for the housing rehab.
Do I understand correctly that applications for housing rehab loans are to be submitted through the PBPC?
Correct.
And is there no money available now, or some, from previous year?
In the FY '18 grant, we have about $110,000, which should be three to four minutes.
Yeah, depending on how much, but yeah.
And then assuming that the, this, what's outlined in blue here comes in under budget, they'll, they'll be able to transfer from the construction to housing rehab.
But people could apply now for housing rehab?
Yes, yes.
It's rolling?
Yeah, yeah.
How is that opportunity advertised, or is it, do you just have to know?
So we periodically run advertisements in the Gazette. We've had, we've done Facebook posting, and there's information on our website.
But yeah, I saw it in the newspaper.
There's a lot of word enough for it. Sometimes these people, sometimes people have run-ins with, like Board of Health or Building Commissioner, who also know about these programs. So people are, you know, can't do the required code fixes, they'll, they can, they'll often recommend. And then social services throughout the community. There's, a lot of communities do the housing rehab, so can people apply for the housing, sorry, the heating?
Fuel assistance?
Fuel assistance out of, out of the community, out of Greenfield. They'll often, you know, there'll be conversations or homeowner, and so it's a lot of word enough as well.
Are applications available on the PBPC website?
No, they, we'll send out one, so there's a contact there.
Give a call?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a housing coordinator that handles everything that comes in. It's up there. Anybody want to do something different than this?
That's a great timing, it's an idea, right?
But safety comes quick. But like I said, we'll, we're, we will be working on that, focusing on the Ferry Street area, but there's always, I mean, those of you who were at the last meeting know there's a lot on that list that, it's not all CDVG related, there's other things on there that, I mean, where the funding's coming from, whether it's through other, other grant sources. So it's, it kind of came across at the last meeting, like it was a static list of 37 things, but it's kind of always in flux. So, you know, you can kind of chip away at where we can chip away at things. So if there's ever ideas or concerns or areas that are not on that list, or that maybe should be a priority that, you know, we're not necessarily aware of or haven't thought about, then, I mean, I don't want to speak for you guys, but you know, we're always writing out things. then, I mean, I don't want to speak for you guys, but you know, we're always ready to update it.
And the intent is to start the planning, to continue the planning for the FY 20 through this year, continuing with those income surveys and continuing with meetings probably towards the end of the summer to really make sure that what we're doing is what the community wants and needs.
So I just want to say something real quick about income surveys, because we keep saying that and maybe, I mean, it's obvious when I tell you, it's just, it's a very brief survey that actually just rudely asks what your income level is. That's pretty much it. It doesn't say specifically what it is, it just has ranges. So then we can, like I said before, there's the low, moderate income brackets. And then we see which, where everybody falls in, in those brackets. And then, so we just need an address. And there's a couple other questions, like single family, or, yeah, single family, or who's head of household, that type of stuff. And then the basic thing is where do you fall in your income? So if you ever get one of those, that's what it's different.
Are those questions required and standard?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Are those questions required and standard?
Yeah, it's, it's the way, it's the best way, I guess, that we can figure out if a neighborhood meets the, so to do a project, that neighborhood has to be low, moderate income, 51% or above. So not everybody has to be low, moderate income. So that's the, the easy, you know, and that's what they take at the state level and then up to the feds about, you know, proof that this is a low, moderate income neighborhood. So, yeah, it's not.
So you go the direct route, rather than asking, for example, a set of questions like, how many times in the last month or in the last three months have you had to choose between?
Yeah, yeah, it has to be, yeah, it has to be more specific, it has to be very direct specific, yeah, yeah.
Do you deliver the survey after you've identified a neighborhood that you want to improve or?
Um, yes and no, it depends. So like Ferry Street one, I mean, that's one we want to focus on. But then what actual projects happen and what actual streets? Because we're, so the reason it's probably going to take a while is because it's actually, I just keep saying Ferry Street neighborhood, but it's a bunch of, it's that, what was it called, the old?
Old town.
Yeah, that whole, new town.
New city.
New city. Right, rural, right, yes. So anyway, it's a large area. And there may be sections or full streets in there that will actually not qualify. So we do it ahead of time for a larger area and then we'll probably have to narrow it down when actually it gets done, yeah. And it's all, it's not difficult or obviously, but it's just time-consuming. We do mailings, we walk, you know, walk the streets and just kind of knock on doors and that takes a long time.
Wow.
And.
You try to get 100% participation?
Uh, it depends how big the neighborhood is. So if it's like one street or two streets, you want to get as close to 100% as you can. If it's a larger neighborhood, if you're doing the full neighborhood, then you, a little more wiggle room to, you know, try to get as close to 100%, but, yeah.
Just to back that up a little, that, going back to, prior to 2017, the state required us to have what's called a target area. And all of our community development projects had to be within that target area. And the target area was chosen based off of census tracts, census block groups, and the areas that were, according to census, low or moderate income or had much higher populations of low to moderate income people. But that's still not, even though we have those broad demographics, that's not detailed enough once you get into a specific project. So we have to, like Ted's saying, we have to do the income survey. We know that there's need, we know that we've identified a project. And then we have to go and see, does this neighborhood actually qualify? And if it qualifies, great, and if not, then, you know, we're looking for a different funding source or we're looking for a different project.
I have a different kind of question. I know that Columbia Gas is doing line replacements in this neighborhood too. Is the construction going to be sequence such that they aren't going to have to rip up newly paved roads to, do that work?
That is our, that is our plan and our intent. The city engineers couldn't make it to this meeting tonight, but they are very involved with this project. You know, it's, we, Planning Department, PBPC are doing all the sort of really fun application and paperwork and stuff like that. But the engineers are, you know, they're, they're going out there to do checks and inspections and making sure that it works. And they're, they're aware of what we're applying for, so they're contacting the utilities to make sure that any of their work is done before we get our money and can put it into those neighborhoods. That being said, if, you know, things happen and they have to dig up the street, then you're going to go ahead and dig up the street regardless of our best efforts to avoid it.
Any questions, comments?
No.
Thoughts?
Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you.
Very, very important that you guys came, so we can actually submit this application and.
Give any public comments.
Yeah, so this is, this is part of the, that public was involved and engaged and, you know.
Yep.
State takes it seriously. Thank you. Great, thanks.